All right, let's call the meeting to order at six thirty-one. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Berman.
Here.
Trustee Luther.
Here.
Trustee McNeil.
Here.
Trustee Pierce.
Present.
Trustee Mason.
Yes.
Trustee Peterson.
Present.
Mayor Gert.
Present. All right, um, welcome. This is the June twelfth, uh, regular meeting to start. We have some, um, acknowledgements, um, in June. It's a busy month. Uh, June sixth was D-Day. Um, it is also, um, Pride Month. Flag Day is the fourteenth. Father's Day is the sixteenth and Juneteenth is, uh, observed this year on the nineteenth of, um, June. So, uh, we also want to acknowledge and, uh, send our condolences to the passing of, to the family of Lee Shannon, who, um, was a very involved in the village, both the fire department, I believe, uh, emergency management and the village for a long time. Uh, he was hired as the public safety inspector in that, in the village in October of nineteen eighty-nine and worked for the village all the way until August, uh, twenty seventeen. So again, we want to send our condolences to his family. And, um, I know his son works for us at the public works department as well. Uh, next, um, is Tenley here? I don't think she's here. Okay. Um, so we have a special guest today. I believe it is her birthday as well. Is that right? Okay. So we have Felicity Dyxel. Uh, she's the happy little sunflower girl, uh, recognition. She began sharing sunflowers with people in October of two thousand eighteen when she was three years old. Since then, she has shared over six thousand felt sunflowers with the help of her sisters, Gus and her brother Asher. Her mission is to share sunflowers with the whole world to help people be happy, healthy and strong. We've shared them locally at businesses, schools and hospitals and throughout local organizations. They've also been able to share a few internationally as well as nationally through an org- organization called Project Bear, which sends bereavement teddy bears to families that have lost babies due to miscarriages and stillbirth. Felicity's journey can be found on Facebook at Little Happy Sunflower. And again, today is her birthday and I think she's going to talk to us, but you know what we're gonna do? We're gonna sing happy birthday first. How about that? Okay? All right. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Felicity.
Happy birthday to you.
All right. Are you ready? All right. You're not shy. That's good. Okay. Let's hear, let's hear about your, uh, how you started this and about your sunflowers.
Hello, Milgottno and Village Trustees. My name is Felicity Dyxel and tonight I want to share a little happy sunflower with each of you. In two thousand eighteen, when I was three years old, I asked my mom if I could share real sunflowers with the whole world. She said no. Instead, she made little felt sunflowers for me to share with everyone to help people be happy, healthy and strong. Since then, I have shared some flowers with the help of my brother Asher and sister Gus. We've shared some flowers with people in our community as well as schools, churches, hospitals, businesses, organizations, people serving overseas and families across the world that need a little sunshine. Some of my sunflowers have even gone to other countries. I've shared some flowers with Santa Claus, Iron Man, and some of my favorite TV and movie characters in real life. So far, I have shared over six thousand sunflowers. And now that I'm older, I've started helping my mom make them. I don't want to stop until I've shared some flowers with everyone in the world. I hope these sunflowers make you smile. If you already have one, you can share this one with someone you love. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, Felicity. I just want you to know, I, ever since you started this, I put sunflowers on my dashboard that you give me of my car. That makes it easier to find my car. Which then means I can make my way home. So you always help me get home. So thank you.
Thank you. Felicity, when you're done, I have something for you. So I'll let you finish passing these out. So again, thank you for coming. Here's a certificate of recognition for you that you can, uh, put in the frame and take home with you. And then also a cupcake for your birthday.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's make sure the whole meeting is that nice. All right, um. Next, uh, we have, I need a motion in a second, uh, to appoint Brittany Church to the Parks Board with a term ending in twenty twenty-five. She can't be here tonight, but the clerk will, um, swear her in when she's available.
So moved.
Motion, Trustee Peterson. Second trustee Berman, any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Berman.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Six voting yes motion carries. Um, all right. And talking about a glutton for punishment. Not only does he have two jobs right now, but he's worked at the village of Antioch twenty-five years as of June twenty-first. It's, uh, Jeff's twenty-five year anniversary, uh, coming up. Uh, so get a round of applause for all that you've done for the town. Um, next we have citizens wishing to address the board. I'll have the village clerk go over the brief ground rules. And, um, if, which your names called, please come up here and, uh, state your name for the record at the podium. Thank you.
The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the village and public input is very helpful. Board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board and democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous and the board requests that you not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. To the extent multiple speakers are addressing a single issue, the mayor reserves the right to limit the number of speakers making public comment. The board does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period. And first we have Patricia Kaufman.
Hi, um, my name is Patricia Kaufman. I live at two hundred Maplewood Drive in Antioch here. Um, this has been an ongoing issue on my property of flooding. And when it first all started, I had the village come out. And they said, the inspector, whoever it was, came out and said, oh, well, the guy built a garage behind you. He raised the level of the lot. The water line goes from across my front yard down the property line through the neighbor's line where the sewer is in front of his lot, right up high shaped corner. Uh, and I've been having these flooding issues ever since then. Um, I need an answer, a, a solution. My health, I, I have so much water in my yard. I've constantly got mold. Um, it, it's gotta be a way to get this water flowing back down to the sewer where it should be. You know, and I, I just, I, I'm hoping that you guys will help me.
All right, thank you. And, uh, public works director is here, so we'll make sure they take a look at it for you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for coming here. Thank you.
Nikki Georgia.
Um, yeah, I have no objection to that. You want to speak at that time. Um, all right. So move on to the consent agenda. We have, uh, two items on the consent agenda. Do I have any, um, request to remove either of those items? All right. If not, I'll take a motion in a second.
Go move it.
Second.
Motion trustee Bluthart, second trustee Pierce. Roll call, please.
Berman.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Six voting yes motion carries. First item on the regular business, consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff in the amount of two million five hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and nine cents. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee McNeil, second trustee Berman. Um, I know that one point eight million of that was for, uh, Bowler payments. So that's a, and a, and a large insurance payment that we blew across Blue Shield. Um, so any other discussion on that? All right, roll call, please.
Berman.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Six voting yes motion carries. Next item is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the village administrator to purchase forty-eight Trojan UV lamps for the treatment facility in the amount of twenty-two thousand, three sixty-six and twenty cents, resolution number twenty-four dash forty-two. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Pierce, second trustee Berman. Roll call, please.
Berman.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes. All right. Next item five, consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the Trojan UV PLC programmable logic controllers and HMI, human machine interface upgrade project in the amount of thirty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. Resolution number twenty-four dash forty-three. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Pierce. Uh, roll call, please.
Berman.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Six voting yes motion carries. Six, consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the village administrator to execute a professional services agreement with HR Green in the amount of forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the twenty twenty-four roadway resurfacing program, resolution number twenty-four dash forty-four. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee McNeil, second trustee Berman. Roll call, please.
Berman.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
All right, uh, consideration and approval, number seven, consideration and approval of a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code authorizing the expenditure of motor fuel tax funds in the amount of six hundred thousand dollars for the twenty twenty-four road resurfacing program, resolution number twenty-four dash forty-five. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Motion trustee Peterson, second trustee Berman. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Six voting yes motion carries. All right. Next item number eight. Hopefully Joey Haley's on Zoom watching. Is consideration and approval of a resolution authorizing the village administrator to execute an engineering agreement with HR Green in the amount of hundred nine thousand, nine hundred dollars for the, for the Woods of Antioch Concrete Road Replacement Program, resolution number twenty-four dash forty-six. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Bluthart, second trustee Pierce. Um, roll call, please.
Berman.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Six voting yes motion carries. Next item number nine, consideration and approval of an ordinance approving the issuance of a Class J BYOB liquor license for the Antioch Fine Arts Foundation, ordinance number twenty-four dash oh-six dash thirty-one. Again, this only is for a address change. Um, do I have a motion in a second waving the second reading?
So moved, waving the second reading.
Motion trustee McNeil, second trustee Peterson. Roll call, please. Yep. There's this, we don't have a certificate for the village. We got one to the state of Illinois, but not for the village.
We'll make sure that's taken care of before the license is issued.
Okay. Thank you. And the insurance certificate. Okay. Thank you. Um, okay. With that, one, um, caveat that we will track down the insurance certificate, um, to, roll call, please.
Berman.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
McNeil.
Yes.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Okay. The next one we're gonna talk about for a second, because this is like, uh, I guess a very, um, I guess historic moment that we're finally gonna name this park that we've called everything from the Pittman property to the sinkhole, the village green, the never be called village green. So we're finally at a point where we're gonna name this park that's gonna be around for hopefully a long time, hundred, hundred years or more. So, um, as you know, we went through the process of, um, a public, uh, name vote, uh, went to the, um, Parks Board who narrowed it down to five choices. And I think, you know, as the democratic process plays out, uh, there is a, was a resounding, uh, favorite of the public. And so one of the choices was Seacroft Creek Park. So on that note, I would like to present item number ten, consideration and approval of a resolution accepting the proposed, proposed Seacroft Creek Park named for the village's newest park at Orchard and Main. Resolution number twenty-four dash forty-seven. Do I have a motion of a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Pierce, second trustee Bluthart, second trustee Mason. All right, um, do we have any other discussion on this? This is a unique item. All right, let's do it. Let's call the, roll call, please.
Yes.
Luther.
Yes.
Yes.
Pierce.
Hi.
Mason.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Six voting yes motion carries. Thank goodness we have a name. Um, all right, administrative, administrator report.
Thank you, mayor. So I can change my, uh, report from open space update to park. That's a, it's a nice transition. Just want to let the board know that, uh, you, utility contractors and connections are underway to start bringing power and service to that site. Um, so hopefully in the very near future, we'll start having a little bit more public spectacle and display of the features of the park as these things come online. As you probably saw, the Neri Pavilion was completed and installed yesterday without any issues. If you haven't seen the video yet, that Assistant Administrator Moran posted on our Facebook page, I would encourage you to check that out. It's, it's a pretty, pretty neat video he was able to put together. With all the rain that we've had, the completion date of the park has been pushed back slightly. Um, initially we were hoping for, uh, substantial completion right around the Fourth of July. Bowlers advised us that they're probably gonna have to push that out about two weeks until mid-July. Um, so things are still tracking nicely. It's just the weather has not cooperated with us. Rachel and, uh, Jim Moran are in the process of planning the grand opening for the park for August. As this plan comes together and the specifics are finalized, the details will be communicated both to you and, and the public. Attentively, the large pine tree that's gonna be another one of the centerpieces, um, around the holidays for the park is scheduled to be installed in August. Um, our design team has been working with the nursery and, uh, this, this large pine tree has very short planting windows. We missed the spring one. It's the next one that we have is, that's gonna be, uh, in the interest of the health of the tree is gonna be in the August timeframe. So we hope to have that in and ready to go before the grand opening of the park. Uh, village staff is currently working with bond counsel. Uh, we're waiting a bond opinion for determination on what our best strategy to move forward with the Pittner property on North Avenue is gonna be. Um, we initially discussed that we may have to amend the business districts, but it appears based on legal's initial findings that we may be able to simply amend the bond ordinance rather than go through the rigmarole of having to change the business district boundary. So it'll be a, a smoother process for us to get to that to ensure that the bond funds that we're using to fund our capital projects are being allocated appropriately. Dennis continues to work with Williams on the public works schematic and design. Um, Williams made several attempts to bring the existing structure into the budget guidelines that the board's given staff. Uh, under the current design to bring to achieve this, uh, we were finding that significant portions of the building was gonna have, were gonna have to be eliminated. Uh, the most recent suggestions, uh, to, to cut costs were, were very valuable spaces to Dennis's team, including like a mechanics bay and the wash bay for his equipment. Um, so under FQC, up FQC's guidance, um, some major design revisions are gonna have to be undertaken. Um, with the latest feedback from Williams, looking like we're gonna transition that from a two-story building to a single-story building to drive those costs home. So the, uh, the good news is, is that we're, we're making significant progress. The bad news is it's a little bit back to the drawing board, but FQC is doing what we hired them to do and helping rein those costs in and make sure that we land this project on budget and on time. Village Hall pro- project continues to move forward. I think we're nearing the point where we'll bring initial schematic to the village board. Uh, we recently had a meeting and we're now engaging office staff that work within the village hall to start giving input and feedback on, on some of the little, uh, uh, issue, uh, spaces within village hall. Um, there'll be some spaces that we may not need. There's some spaces that we may need to add to, but we hope to bring kind of a, a final recommendation for the village board to, to view in the very new feat, new future. Once again, FQC is really providing, uh, to, to prove is a valuable resource for this project to deliver it on time and on budget. Um, they're very focused on our, on our costs, which is nice. Uh, right now, tentatively, the plans are for FQC to bring this out to bid sometime in October, November with the hope that renovations may begin in November, December. Our kickoff concert, as you know, is, uh, is, is scheduled for tomorrow. Uh, the plans are all coming together. Well, staff is doing a fantastic job. Uh, making sure that, uh, no stern is unturned and all the details are attended to. So I'd like to give them some acknowledgement, recognition for all the hard work that they've put into this. Um, as you know, without their, without their efforts, we could not put on such fantastic events like this for our community. I would just like to point out to the board, the hard work that goes into this. So on the PD side of things and, uh, emergency management, we are closely monitoring the weather situation. A couple of days ago, we were extremely optimistic that we were gonna have a good forecast, but as of the latest modeling this afternoon, it appears that Northern Lake County is on the, uh, far northern edge of a, of a front that's gonna be coming in. And of course, the weather timeframe for, uh, severe weather chances right now is between six and eight PM. So we're hoping that that shifts south. Um, if not, yeah, um, the good news is we did purchase a cancellation policy in the event. We, uh, would have to cancel this event that would cover the, the bulk of our, bulk of our costs. But keep your, uh, keep your fingers crossed and say a prayer that, uh, everything goes south and that we're able to host this event as planned. And then recently, the liquor, uh, the liquor commissioner, mayor in his capacity as list liquor commissioner, uh, recently held a liquor compliance hearing for, um, discount tobacco located at eighty-three in the state line. Um, as I reported to the board previously, that PD had done their kratom and Delta Eight compliance inspections and found that, uh, this, this business was not in compliance with our current ordinance relative to their licensing. Um, the mayor held the hearing and the licensee was found liable for those code violations. The mayor held them accountable, entered an order imposing a significant monetary fine and their liquor license was suspended for two weeks. I would like this to serve as an example to other license holders that the board's resolved to keep these products off the shelves of our retailers and inaccessible to the, of our community. One last thing I want the board to be aware of is, um, recently at the mayor's request, staff began exploring the possibility for future support of a main street organization. Assistant Administrator and Business Development Manager Mark Searle would be able to provide more details than I can. If you have any questions, you can reach out to them. But I still wanted to make the board aware that the members of our community are exploring this. I hope, hope that this is, uh, this is a resident-driven initiative that partners with businesses and helps to support local retail and dining, uh, establishments within our downtown business district. One such example of this can be found in Libertyville, which has been in place for several decades. The organization raises funds to support initiatives that will draw business to our small business community. Uh, Jim Moran has had discussions with this initiative with our Chamber of Commerce Executive Director, um, who reports that she's excited to see a collaboration and looks forward to partnering with this future organization as it gets off the ground. Um, being a resident-driven initiative, um, one of the first volunteers that stepped up to help organize this group is Mary Dominiac. And she's currently working to schedule a kickoff meeting with stakeholders. So just in case you hear something about that, I wanted to let you know that's, that's taking place. But that'll conclude my report unless there's any questions.
I just want to clarify one thing for the trustees' schedules. If we're try, we're kind of tracking for the sixteenth, seventeenth weekend for the opening, so people can clear their schedules or try, you know, if there's a conflict that they know about.
August, sorry.
Yeah.
Forgive me, mayor, I should have been.
Yeah, no, I just, I just, so people don't plan a vacation, say why don't they know.
I'm gonna walk through the, I've never been in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Building too. I've never been in that building.
Over here, the, um, yeah.
Staff, staff will coordinate, will coordinate with Bowler and set a, a date that we can get in, in access to the site and walk you through the park.
He's, he's talking about village hall too.
I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you were referring to the park as well. Never seen what's, what's there, so when you do it. Yeah, just, just give us a call. Dennis has keys to the building and we could schedule a time for you to come, come through any point you want. Ask the other guy, but whatever. We're happy to.
Questions for?
Anytime you get time. Well, okay, just give me a holler. I'm always ready.
And a walk through of the park?
Yeah, I need, I mean.
Building.
You guys, if you come to village hall, pick up a vest and a hard hat. Feel free to go out there and, um, you know, obviously you'll see where the people are working, but feel free to go check it out. I walked in yesterday and when you're in the middle of it, it's a lot bigger than it looks from the street too. So, um.
Just, just, just give, give us a call and we're happy to take, take anyone who'd like to go through there.
Trustee Pierce.
Just, just for the, the village hall design, can you please put dank hallways in there? Crooked hallways, unlevel hallways, weird rooms and weird locations and some jail cells. We want to make our staff.
You want to make it nostalgic? You want to make it nostalgic?
Yes.
Don't forget the leaky roof.
All right, thank you. And, um, you know, I think, uh, when, once we get the next revision after today from the architects, we can circulate that for, you know, at least the board. We're very close, I think. So.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Um, village clerk.
In, included in your packet is the annual, um, MS four report. This is, um, recommended, uh, one of the tasks recommended by the IPA and is included in the village's stormwater management protection plan. Um, and one of the, the requirements is that we presented at a public meeting. Um, so no action is required. I'm just notifying you of the report, providing it to you. And any questions regarding it can be directed to, um, Dr. Heimbro. Um, on another note, I would like to, um, as you all know, Cheryl Matea has taken another employment opportunity. So I just want to take a moment to thank her for, for years of service, um, with the village. She's been an outstanding deputy clerk and, and a great advocate for our employees and staff, and she will be greatly missed.
Thank you. Um, trustee reports. Any trustee reports? Trustee Pierce.
I'd just like to ask that all the trustees, as they're driving up Anita at nighttime, if they are, take a look at how dark that stretch is from, uh, Depot all the way up to where the crosswalk is. Um, we have people walking down the sidewalk at night that you can't even see. Vampires can be living there. You just don't know. So as you're looking at, maybe start thinking about as we budget next year, putting lighting in or something to extend, to make it safer for, that's a major pathway. Not the park, the sidewalk that go from Depot all the way up to the crosswalk that goes into the park.
All right. Thank you. Trustees, anything? All right. I think that I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and, uh, for a little break.
So moved.
Motion trustee Pierce, second trustee Bluthart, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposeds? We will, um, reconvene the, um, committee of the whole meeting in about five to 10 minutes. All right. Call the meeting back to order at seven oh-five. Um, this is the committee of the whole meeting. Uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Berman.
Here.
Trustee Luther.
Here.
Trustee McNeil.
Here.
Trustee Pierce.
Present.
Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Present.
Mayor Gert.
Present. Um, one, uh, one item I forgot to, um, mention on the mayor report, in, uh, July, there is a, a significant item that was, um, coming before the PZB. And, um, that meeting was scheduled for July third. Uh, we are gonna have a PZB meeting in lieu of a board meeting on July tenth that day. We'll just have one July meeting if that is, uh, uh, okay with the board. So if there's any, um, questions about that or we can reach out to the village clerk or concerns, um, but we want to make sure that PZB hearing, uh, took place in July. Okay? Um. Next, uh, we have the first item on here is the regular business review of IGA establishing the Lake County Consolidated Emergency Communications, LakeCom.
Who is present?
Oh, chief, chief. Chief Administrator.
One forty-six. Forty-six. Thank you, sir. Right.
Thank you, mayor. So as the board is aware, for a number of years, there's been discussions, um, taking place within Lake County relative to regional nine-one-one consolidation, um, which kind of stems from some legislative guidance that came from the state, uh, to see nine-one-one centers consolidate. And just for some members of the board that may not have, uh, been on the board at the time, these, these, these topics came up for discussion. Just gonna give you a little bit of rundown of the history of how we got to where we're at. Excellent. So really the problem originated, um, to address nine-one-one call transfer delays. So currently there's twelve public safety answering points. We call them PSAPS within Lake County. Um, these are where the nine-one-one calls that are placed. Anywhere in the Lake County area are routed to. And historically, um, it worked rather well to have a number of different individual PSAPs, as you remember, probably going back to two thousand twelve, thirteen, uh, we had our own nine-one-one center within Antioch. We moved to a semi-consolidated center at that point, uh, currently within SenCom. So this is not gonna be a unfamiliar model that we're moving to. It's just a, a larger scale for us. But one of the problems with the, uh, the current, um, configuration of the PSAPs of Finley County is that although traditional landlines may route to the centers accurately, uh, with the invention of cellular phones and, uh, voiceover internet protocol, not, uh, home residential lines. These, uh, these, these phone providers may not same, follow the same geographical boundaries, which results in calls going to the wrong center. Um, about a year and a half, maybe two years ago, uh, the Antioch Fire Department experienced an extreme case of this with the Mr. J's, um, fire, where the call was received at the wrong center. It was then rerouted to the incorrect center, bounced among centers, which ultimately led to about a twenty-minute delay in the appropriate dispatching of emergency services for a structural fire. So really a very significant, um, public safety concern. Kind of further compounding the problem is there's dispatch boundary overlays. As you can see in the map, um, the fire and EMS agencies overlap a lot. An example of this would be within Antioch and unincorporated Antioch. within Antioch and unincorporated Antioch where, where our dispatch boundaries overlap a little bit, um, with the sheriff's office dispatching police services for unincorporated area, then SenCom dispatching fire services. As you can understand between the two centers, which have no, no, um, physical link to one another, um, could lead to confusion. And again, this is meant to, to highlight the delays that we're trying to address to, um, improve services to our residents. Next slide. So two thousand eighteen, um, the, the, the project consolidation project began under the leadership of Lake County. Um, the, the plan to consolidate regional nine one one services was structured to provide the highest quality nine one one services and a lasting value for the participating communities. As you could see, one of the core requirements that was, that was highlighted by the, the, the committee that, uh, the consolidation committee. It's got to be the right public safety resources to the right locations within, with the right information in the shortest amount of time. And then general safety and situational awareness for first responders during a caller incident uh, was, it was also a primary consideration. Next slide. So before I go into the, the IGA that we're actually structuring, um, I just want to highlight that, as I discussed, we're currently with SenCom, which is a semi consolidated center. The timing really worked out well for, for us, um, is, is a village for moving forward to this. So SenCom has provided fantastic service to our community. But unfortunately they currently leased their, um, center from the village of Round Lake Beach. About two years ago, the village of Round Lake Beach notified SenCom that they no longer wish to extend that lease to SenCom, which forced them to start looking for other alternatives. So as you can imagine, a smaller consolidated center, um, with the current, I believe there's seven communities with that center currently. Trying to fund the capital and build of a new center would be extremely costly. So we were going to find ourselves going to market for nine one one service and dispatch services anyway. So the timing of the arrival of this regional nine one one center really, really worked out nicely for us. So before the board tonight is an implementing IGA, which is designed to create the new intergovernmental cooperative organization, which is going to follow a similar model of joint governance, um, that we're currently under. If approved by the board this evening, the village of Antioch would become one of the founding members of LakeCom and we'd be guaranteed a member agency seat within the member agency board. So all the big decisions moving forward within LakeCom, the village is going to have a say within that. Um, not necessarily guiding the specific operations of the center, but the structure, the governance, um, bylaws, the funding mechanisms and formulas, all those kinds of things that are yet to be designed, um, the village would have a say in, in those discussions. Also will define a pathway for any public agency within Lake County to become a partner. The, uh, the center is sized to host every fire and law enforcement agency within Lake County. If at some point that is desired to come on board, if they are not becoming a founding, um, member agency or join shortly thereafter. Um, if you follow other models within the area, over time, most agencies are believed to come in, uh, UCOM into Page County followed a similar pathway a number of years ago. And over time, nearly all of their, uh, uh, municipalities within Page County have come into the center. The IGA will also guide the, guide the creation of bylaws, the governance and the cost sharing models for the center. Establish the staffing structure and support functions that this, this nine one one center is going to provide and then provide a transition pathway for current PSAP employees to the new PSAP. So one of the primary components, obviously with all these centers, you have a lot of people, a lot of talent, people that you want to retain. So it was very important to the uh, PCC commission to ensure that there is a pathway for the employees that wish to become employees of LakeCom to have a pathway to do so. Just kind of in closing, next slide, Jim. One of the biggest questions is what's it going to cost? Unfortunately, there's a lot of unknowns. I can't give you a very specific dollar amount, uh, but the new, the creation of a new center, um, and new governance. A lot of that governance can't be decided until there's a member, a governance board in place, which the implementation of this IGA would, will create within the, the member agencies. And again, as I highlighted, that the board approves this, Antioch will have a seat on that board and will have a seat in the, in the decisions that are made. A lot of the, uh, kind of unknown factors that are going to figure into what the ultimate budget of the center is going to be, which are going to determine costs is the number of agencies that will, that will join the center. Um, there are some within the county that currently have made the decision not to join the center. Um, there's some that are not going to be listed as founding members, but are going to come in within the next few months or anticipated, I should say, to come in over the next couple of months. They're just not quite as far along in the process as we are, um, at this date. There's decisions yet to be made on how the nine one one surcharge funds that are going to be received by the joint ETSB are going to be utilized and applied. Currently, um, for example, currently our nine one one surcharges fund our MDCs and, and, uh, and mobile data computers within the squad cars and the cellular services associated with those. Now, we don't know if that is going to continue to be the case, or if those uh, nine one one surcharge funds are going to be directed to offset some of the operational costs. And then one of the under, other lingering questions that this board will have to decide is if there's going to be à la carte services that the center will offer. You know, currently SenCom officer, offers some camera monitoring services, some after hours administrative phone services, those type of things. And decisions will have to be made if those are going to be provided as part of the standard contract with LakeCom. Or if it's going to be kind of an, uh, uh, as needed service that we would purchase, or if there will be outside additional costs for us to contract with an outside, outside service or vendor to provide some of those services that we currently have. The costs will be comprised of a blended formula, um, that they've settled on. It'll be blended between the calls of service the community has in a, in a, in a year, the population and the EAV. But again, the board is going to have to make, future board will have to make a decision of how much weight they're going to place on each of those factors. Again, makes it a little bit difficult to specify exactly what our costs are going to be. Next slide. But fortunately, um, there are a lot of very talented finance directors that are part of the committee that are putting this whole thing together. Um, finance directors from several other municipalities, currently most of the PSAP communities within Lake County. So our current estimated gross cost for dispatch services are roughly three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars under the SenCom model. Once you factor in rent, uh, dispatch services, um, the public work services, dispatch services that we receive and those type of things. Um, based on the estimated budget for LakeCom, um, they're telling us their estimated gross cost for LakeCom membership year one is expected to be about three hundred and nine thousand. Um, there's some variable factors in there. Um, Antioch is used to paying the actual cost of service for dispatch. You know, as a, as a consolidated center, we're paying our fair share for the full operation of that center. Employee costs, capital costs, equipment costs, those sort of things. There's a lot of communities that have experienced significant cost increases, um, that they, they may not have been anticipating because they're currently within centers that are, that are gen, essentially underwriting the costs of some other dispatch communities. You know, FoxCom, for example, which is, which is part of the village of Foxlake, um, has an operational budget. Um, and the current community, member communities there are not paying their, their full cost of, of dispatch services within the community, the village of Foxlake helps support the operations because they feel that that center is important to their community. So they're going to, as they start paying these, these full fair share costs of the dispatch services, um, the board is being asked whether or not they want to provide a, a pathway what they're calling a smoothing for these communities to be able to come on board and become partners. And the way that would work is some of the communities that are not, um, seeing the significant costs such as ours. We see a little bit of their cost savings eroded over a few years to help fund these other communities to come on board. But over time, those costs are equalized. And as these other communities saw more significant increase in their costs year after year, Antioch would slow down. So I'm told that over time, everything will balance out and we're not talking a huge sum of money. Um, you know, somewhere, somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen to twenty thousand dollar would be the impact for us if they went with this smoothing. Um, like everything else, you know, even though we, we are looking at a potential cost savings in the first year or two of operation, like everything else, costs go up and based on the current cost modeling, the budget estimates show that we will exceed our current gross costs in year five, um, compared to what we pay now. But we also must consider that we see a year over year increase with SenCom as well. You know, as, as employee costs and cost of operation increase, our billings from SenCom increase too. So it's really difficult to try to make an apples to apples comparison of where we're going to be at. But the thought process, um, amongst member agencies that are seeking to join is over time, this will be a cost savings and, and certainly it's going to lead to operational efficiencies. It's going to improve communications interoperability. The more police departments you have within the same center, the better the communications and the, and the better the services we'll be able to provide to our community. And I will end my presentation and be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Jeff, what's the term of the IGA? I didn't, I didn't catch that.
I'd have to double check. I don't, I don't have it sitting in front of me. We have, we have, we have, we have to approve it by July first, become a founding member. But I'm not sure what the term, accurate term is. I'll have to double check the language.
So we need this on the next board, regular meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Trustee Pierce?
When does this become functional?
So this, the center is, is largely, um, structurally up, right? So they've got the building up, they're putting the roof on it, they're starting to make the, make the, uh, arrangements for some of the equipment. So we're told right now the go live date for the center is, is estimated to be January of twenty-five. So we're about a year out. Um, the committee is about at the point where they're ready to start seeking an executive director, which is going to help guide a lot of these decisions that'll have to be made. And it's important to point out too, that, um, you know, thanks to the, the, the guidance of Lake County, um, roughly the fifty, fifty-three, fifty-four million dollar cost to build this, this center, along with all of the, um, infrastructure and initial equipment, uh, is being paid fully by the county. Over time, we, you know, we will have to sign a lease, there will be a lease agreement that will be factored into our costs. Um, but we still, we have that now with SenCom as well, where we pay services plus rent.
When do, when do, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not through yet. When do we start, um, paying?
Not, my understanding is not, not till the center is up and running.
Okay.
So there's, there's a current, um, when this process started several years ago, there was, there was some seed money that was put in by all of the PSAP communities. SenCom on our behalf put the seed money in. So that, that is currently what is funding some of these studies and the search for the executive director that will take place. Um, you know, I think that specific decisions on, on service costs and when those will be implemented, I think I would expect that over time we'll start to see some impacts. But again, until the board makes some of those decisions, I can't give you a very specific.
And, and how, and, and how, uh, are they going to handle the transfer problem that we have existing? Because if I look at the lists of current places, none of them surround us. In fact, the Lake County Sheriff's Department isn't even part of this.
That's correct. Um, I can't speak for the, um, the decision of the sheriff not to join the county's, um, and one center. Sure he has his reasons. So I won't speculate on what those may be. But the county board did pass legislation that all nine one one calls within the county will be directed to LakeCom. So whether or not they're coming from incorporated Antioch or unincorporated Antioch, Libertyville, Lake Zurich, all of that one calls are going to be routed to, um, the center. The technology is evolving a little bit. So currently when there's call transfers right now, dispatcher physically dials the phone, transfers the call over, makes that transition. It's going to be more seamless through the technology now that we're all under integrated, um, CAD system and mobile, mobile data computer system. So dispatcher will be able to seamlessly transfer the call from unincorporated Lake County, for instance, from LakeCom over to the sheriff's office dispatch center.
Okay. And then I got one more thing to say. Um, previous boards made hard decisions and previous boards worked hard to make sure we're getting the most cost effective, um, nine one one service we could get through SenCom. And I'm not pitching for SenCom, I'm pitching for the previous boards and the current board. We've, uh, we've worked hard to keep our cost effective with the nine one one service, which is a vital service.
Yes.
I don't necessarily want to spend my taxpayer dollars to support other communities that didn't work hard and didn't make smart decisions as they try to bleed their way in, so to speak.
Understood.
I don't think it's fair to our residents. And that's just my input.
I'm, I'm sure whomever, whomever the mayor appoints to sit as the member agency representative for the village of Antioch will be happy to advocate on behalf of the board's position.
Isn't there, isn't there a way we can boot the nine one one across them that everybody's home though?
There are, there are nine one one surcharge dollars that are current, currently collected.
Currently collected.
Yes.
Second question, so we can, we possibly have to whatever, we can upload charges. Second, this new service, I'm assuming it's going to keep up with technology with everybody moving to computer phones. Teams. Cause I can make a phone call to my phone. Here's my office. I don't, I don't know how that works. So that's a question. I could be on a boat in Lake Michigan. It looks like that's my office. I don't know how that technology is going to work. How it's going to have input with someone else.
Yeah, I'm not an expert in the field of dispatching as well. Um, one, one of the benefits to going into a brand new center is yours pretty much guaranteed to have most recent state of the art technology. Um, based on what I've seen to date, some of the early decisions that are being made on technology, really there's, there's no costs being spared. If there's things that can be, um, installed to improve the services to Lake County residents, the, the county seems intent on making sure those things come to fruition. And if I may just circle back real quickly to trustee Pierce's comment on, on cost savings. Um, you know, we did not, and just so you know, um, we didn't enter into the decision on LakeCom blindly. There were some comparisons um, conducted. I don't want to name specific centers, but, um, some of, some of our, our very nearby law enforcement partners and I have had contact, um, with some other centers to see, you know, if, if there are other alternatives out there. Um, ultimately, I think from an officer's safety perspective, to make sure that communications interoperability are efficiently come is, is a hundred percent the best choice. It's important for us to, to make sure that we can communicate seamlessly and share information with our, with our nearest neighbor, which is Lake Villa. Then we have, obviously also work very closely with a Foxlake, um, Lynn and Hurst is currently with Glenview. So they moved several years ago. So of course there's been some interoperability challenges there, but we did explore other cost models. Um, and really a lot of it right now comes down to capacity issues with other, within other communities. One of the other very large consolidated, um, dispatch centers within the area that do serve some Lake County communities would not have the current capacity to absorb department of our size. A matter of fact, they couldn't, they couldn't absorb a department of about half our size without having to expand their operations, hire new staff, install new consoles, those sorts of things, which obviously would drive up the costs. So, um, when looking to other centers for, you know, specifically relative to cost savings, it's, it's not really there.
And my, my question isn't about cost savings, it's about fairness.
Sure.
Okay. I don't mind paying our fair share for nine one one service because when, when you're picking up that phone, it's the most important phone call you're making in your life. And you need somebody there and you need the, then the help as soon as you possibly get it. And the transfer issues have been an issue for our residents. But we've paid our fair shares over the years. And now to be asked to pay other people's share plus our fair share is kind of gone to me. That's my.
I would tend to agree with your position, trustee.
Trustee Peterson?
I did have a question, but it was answered. Thank you.
And any other discussion on this item? All right. So we have to move this to the next, uh, board meeting for a vote. Where I see the July first is on the agreement. So we'll make sure we get it for that. All right. Thank you. All right. Next item is discussion regarding a special use variance and site plan for a solar farm located at the property commonly known as six fifty East North Avenue. Um, we have a petitioner, uh, here in person. They have several individuals, um, on Zoom with, I guess, a couple of slides, limited amount of slides for their presentation. Um, I know we have one citizen that signed up to speak on this topic. Is there anybody else that may want to speak on this topic? Um, since I'm opening that up. Okay. So what, um, I'm going to just have you sign in and then you don't have to, if you decide to, and then the clerk can swear you all in at the same time and then it, you don't need to. Okay. All right. We don't need to swear yet. All right. Just don't lie. Um, all right. So we will, um, why don't we start with the, uh, open, uh, open, yeah, forum for the citizens first. And then if things come up throughout, if you want our attention, whatever, I'll try and make this as, um, interactive as possible. Okay? Nikki?
Mayor Gardner and village trustees, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, I moved to Antioch in nineteen ninety-eight, shortly after college. My husband and I raised our family here and are very involved in the community. Uh, a couple of months ago, I was very pleased to hear that Antioch had been provided the opportunity to have a solar farm. This opportunity provides a whole host of benefits to our community. First of all, with regard to our beautiful natural setting and wildlife, this project will provide habitat restoration with native plants, which will be great for the birds, the butterflies, the bees and other critters. The nearby slough will benefit because it will no longer have the erosion and runoff of fertilizer, which does happen with farmland and neighborhood. The nearby slough will benefit because it will no longer have the erosion and runoff of fertilizer, which does happen with farmland and neighborhoods. Financially, this is a win both for the village of Aniak and the local schools. Yearly tax revenue will be generated both for District thirty-four and District one seventeen from the solar farm. As a teacher in District thirty-four, I know that budgets are tight and that every dollar helps. A third benefit with regard to the solar farm is the fact that it will increase our energy infrastructure and provide cleaner energy to over five hundred homes. I have been so impressed with the professionalism that renewable properties has shown. They have listened to and brought in experts to address the concerns of the zoning board and the village board. They have committed to doing this project the right way with creative solutions such as a natural hedge to mask the solar farm from view, offering to put up decorative fencing that's in keeping with the equestrian farms along North Avenue and providing a financial bonus to the village. So I urge you to be forward-thinking and allow this variance so that this project can move forward. Aniak has been given an amazing opportunity to be leaders in our area with the installation of this solar farm. It is a winning use of the land for the environment and the animals that live here. It is a financial win for the village and two of our school districts, and it is a win for our energy infrastructure. Much like the beautiful park, beautiful new park in downtown Aniak, this solar farm will be a source of pride to Aniak residents for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Fishner, you want to come up to the podium? I'll kind of let you lead the cadence of this to a degree. I know there's some slides that you wanted to present and some people on Zoom. So welcome back.
Uh, yes, thank you very much for the opportunity to present tonight. Again, my name's Brian Madigan with Renewable Properties. And I wanted to comment. The one thing I've noticed in the room is everybody looks more tanned from last time we've been here. So glad you're all enjoying the summer. What we wanted to present tonight was some questions came up at the last village board meeting. And so we wanted to provide an opportunity for those subject matter experts to go into depth if the board wanted to do some Q and A with them. But basically to recap on the, the letter that we submitted just a couple of weeks ago. And so what I planned to cover was the point of interconnection, I believe trustee Peterson had some questions there. Our landscape screening and how that compares with the other project on North Avenue. Agrovoltaics and solar grazing, uh, community solar, avian welfare and our property tax comparison. So, um, next slide. On the Zoom, uh, we do have a few experts. That includes Tyler Orkut, who is Renewable Properties manager of community solar, Caleb Scott and Christian Woodall, who are with United Agrovoltaics, who have prepared the solar grazing management and pollinator plan for this project. We also have Dr. Carl Kostchik, who is the expert on avian related issues. And Carl, you may recognize his name, presented at a planning board meeting a few months ago. And then Dave Stryker, you know, so that's the crew who's with me tonight and. So in terms of the point of interconnection and the pole lineup, we looked at five other projects throughout the U.S. The average height was thirty-seven feet, uh, but the poles can range from thirty-five to forty at most. They would look basically the same as the, the current distribution poles that run east to west along North Avenue. And the photo there just shows an example of what those look like at a different project in California. Uh, next slide. Uh, next. Uh, there was a question about the depth and robustness of our, our vegetation or landscaping plan in relation to or in comparison to the project that was recently approved along North Avenue, but within Lake County's jurisdiction. And so the board can rest assured that the entirety of the landscaping along North Avenue is is three plant units per one hundred feet, which is, when you look at North Avenue, there's only seven hundred feet of linear frontage that has that same degree of landscape screening. And so the rest you can kind of see in purple and a teal color there. Then there's a reddish color. Those are all lesser degrees of landscape screening that the county required. So along North Avenue, you'll have fourteen hundred feet roughly of three plants or three plant units per hundred linear feet. Whereas at North Ave, it's, uh, it's only seven hundred. And North Avenue has a lot more area of road frontage than, than in Lake general.
Can you define a plant unit?
Uh, it's, it's basically the the number and type of plant species. So within the landscaping plan, uh, which I don't have in front of me, but was included in our submittal, the plant unit just means the type and species that are noted in that.
So it, it doesn't mean like what it clearly states, which is three plants per hundred feet?
No.
It's, it's something, a unit isn't one plant.
No, it's that, it's.
Whole section of plants, say, if you have in your drawing?
Yeah. I mean, you can see the first slide. A few different species and types of plants within that plant unit. Uh, next slide. So, um, on the Zoom, I have Caleb Scott and Christian Woodall from United Agrovoltaics. So they're going to do a quick run-through on the Agrovoltaics plan. And then if you have questions for them, feel free. Caleb?
Thanks, everyone. Caleb Scott here with United Agrovoltaics. Renewable Properties asked us to take a look at this project and put together this plan for them. Yeah, I, I'm assuming you guys have probably had the time to look it over. Um, and we want to just be here to answer any questions that you have. Uh, we've been, uh, we're a solar grazing outfit. We consult on these types of projects all over the country. Uh, we've been solar grazing for eleven years now with about a little, on a little over a hundred properties with about fifteen thousand sheep in our portfolio. So a little bit about what we do. We're a, a third-party veg management contractor. So we kind of work with the locals. We're a farm partner group. So wherever we are, we are local. Um, it's a local farmer that's, uh, that's doing the work. Let me probably move to the next slide here. So essentially the, the plan here is to not just maintain the agricultural integrity of this site, but to try and maximize it and make it even better. So less erosion, uh, less herbicides, less pesticides and more farm-driven revenue. Um, so, so by adding the solar to this parcel of land, we're actually increasing um, the agricultural value of the land and keeping it in agricultural use for the duration of the project, uh, which, um, you know, includes sheep and, and pollinators as well, pollinator habitat. Um, there are other things within this particular project that we can kind of get into a little, maybe a little bit, but uh, with some, um, that we plan to do with some conservation efforts, and that's releasing wild game birds and things like that. Probably move to the next slide here. So a little bit about solar grazing. Um, so what, what we're essentially doing here is, um, you know, creating a, a, a microclimate with, with the solar panels. So the, the shade provides more, more nutrients, uh, more nutrient-dense plants. Um, our sheep are under shelter protected by the fencing arrays. You know, and using this, uh, low-impact sustained grazing model that we, that we try and implement where we are. Uh, we can, we can actually see these benefits kind of come to fruition. We, we do oftentimes, when possible, um, and, and permitted, try and incorporate other sorts of grazing methods. Maybe that's, uh, like you can see in the picture here, runner ducks or coonie-coonie pigs, um, other sorts of, um, you know, the, the idea isn't that it's just, you know, I, I mean, it is contracted.
May I interrupt for just one? Could he speak closer to his microphone on his computer?
My apologies. I'm actually on my phone. I'm on a conference in Denver, Colorado right now.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
It's hard to hear you.
Yeah. Is that any better?
Yeah, this is better. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. So, um, yeah, essentially the idea is that we want to, we want to create this, say, as it's more than just a vegetation management plan, but it, but an active, uh, but an active, you know, farm essentially. If we can move to the next site here.
That is, that's it, Caleb. So.
Sure.
Maybe you can talk, sorry, can you go back a slide? Maybe you can talk about the stocking density and kind of the plan, how it works with the local farmer. From a management perspective.
Absolutely. So we, we generally, there are, there are three different ways to go about, uh, go about this. Our, our preferred method is usually a, a low-impact sustained grazing model, which means fewer sheep um, over a longer duration of time where we don't let the grass get too short. Um, but we need it to be like maintained within, you know, a, a, a safe and compliant level. And then we, we have rotational grazing where we might separate the paddocks out within the array. Uh, and then we have also mop grazing where we would bring a large number of sheep in for a very short duration of time and then bring, pull them off the site and then bring them back again. And so we, we usually leave it up to the farmer as to which method works best for them and their farm operation. But there are multiple ways to go about it essentially. Um, all of them, you know, in an effort to kind of keep, uh, you know, the, the needs of the town and the needs of renewable properties. Yeah, the, 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 those are the, are important parameters. So they're going to determine how, how we're going to do that.
Okay. Any follow-up questions for Caleb or?
Okay. Um, so I know I mentioned this, I think to Brian on the phone before when we spoke, but one of my big concerns about the sheeve are the coyotes and the predators. You know, originally in the plans, there was a six-foot fence, which I know coyotes can scale. Um, and I apologize if I missed any upgrades to that plan, but I'm still very worried about sending all the sheep out there just to roam to be eaten, just like sitting ducks. Is there any change to that plan?
Yeah. I can start with this and then if Caleb has anything to add. I believe the requirement, uh, within the Aniak ordinance is that, uh, we have to have a eight-foot tall fence. So, um, so we'll have an eight-foot tall, um, woven wire fence that'll surround the project. And so I think in talking with Caleb and I, we, we did run these questions by United Agrovoltaics just to make sure um, there wasn't a potential issue. I think that it would be extremely unlikely for a coyote to scale the eight-foot fence. But Caleb, maybe you can speak more to how you're managing predation on other sites, uh, maybe in New York or, or here locally in Illinois?
Can I just ask one more quick, before he responds, is there a possibility to do something underground because they dig as well to get to their, to the sheep?
So.
Like the fence goes underground or some sort of electric something?
Oh, sure.
They don't, if they, if they can, can't scale it, they'll go underneath just.
Yeah, maybe Caleb, I, we've talked about fencing before, so maybe you can.
Yeah.
Better address that one.
So naturally, um, uh, animal husbandry and like the welfare of our animals is in her very best interest. I mean, certainly, um, you know, we have, we have way more sheep in value out there. Uh, uh, if every sheep is worth three hundred dollars and you're putting three to five sheep to the acre, I mean, you have a lot of asset value out there. So it's in our very best interest to make sure that they're safe, not only just from a PR standpoint, but you know, because financially that, that, that has to happen. So, I mean, obviously, uh, predation is something that every farmer around the country has to face. It's just a reality of farming. You know, we are fortunate that we have fencing that's, you know, five or ten times better than most any other farm fencing. We, we haven't seen a lot of issues if, with, with digging under the fence unless it's a really sandy site or unless there's like, um, out west, we've experienced some where like badgers will dig under and then coyotes will kind of like follow in that kind of track. But again, that's usually really sandy conditions. If the site's well-vegetated and the fencing is tight to the ground and there's a tension, a hard tension wire on the bottom, then, um, then we're not, we're not seeing any greater issue with that than we would in any other farming scenario. And then obviously we're, we're trying our best to mitigate this. So we do, um, every time we come to the site, we do perimeter checks to make sure that the, that the animals are safe. Um, we also have onsite monitoring cameras oftentimes. So e- especially in hot areas where there's a lot of pressure, we'll put a remote monitoring cameras. Um, and then we'll be able to react pretty quickly if something does happen. In, on some occasions, we have used livestock guardian dogs, but usually that's on much larger sites like over like two hundred and fifty or three hundred acres. But, um, but yes, it is something that we take very seriously, um, as every farmer in the country has to take that seriously. But the, the, in, uh, in eleven years of doing this, um, it just hasn't really been an issue. We just, we haven't seen a lot of, uh, e- even in, um, areas where there's a high coyote pressure, um, they, they just they, they, they tend to stay out. If, if there is a problem, it's actually more likely a, an unruly neighborhood dog that will do something, that's probably more likely than, um, than it. But in that case, it, you know, it, it's usually, um, we're able to, to fix that as well, you know, like address that issue right away.
Um, Caleb, also just another question for clarification. There's no barn or anything. The only shelter for the sheep is just under the panels. Is that correct? Like for heat or weather?
Yeah. So in, generally across the United States, like most sheep are o- open pasture grazed. Um, we've found that under solar that they have, um, that they, they, they have a, a five percent more gain rate because they're, they're constantly in the shade, they're constantly out of, um, out of the rain. They have better forage and we have a higher stocking density. But because of the shade that the panels provide, we actually have more and, and the sheep are spending time under the panel. That's usually where they're, you know, spreading their, their manure pellets out like kind of. And, and so there's more nitrogen, there's better nutrients in the plants in those areas. And, um, and so we're seeing actually that there's a higher stocking density on solar than open pasture, which makes it actually better for sheep grazing than if you were to just put them out in open pasture where you might have like Timothy and a few other like, uh, more like full sun tolerant stuff. You have that on the solar site in the laneways, but you also have like a lot of the very, um, the very uh, nutrient-dense plants that prefer a little more shade, um, that kind of diversifies their palate a little more. So, so the, the, the panels provide more than adequate, um, shelter. In the winter months, they will be removed once the vegetation's consumed and brought back for either, um, you know, confinement, um, lambing and then, and then, and then brought back in the spring. So they're, they're not, um, they're not just out there, uh, through the, through the coldest, harshest month. That, that's when they're lambing out and that's when they're going to be back at the barn.
Okay. I just have a couple more questions. I read in the packet that some models do like electric fencing that you just keep moving around to help them graze. Is that what this would be? Just because I know like versus the dog, where you train them, are we just going to be moving the sheep around, zapping them? I'm such an animal person, so I have to make sure.
Generally, no. Um, that, that would be more of a high-intensity rotational grazing model. Um, we try to stay away from that for a couple of reasons. Um, one, because we've found that the low-impact sustained grazing model is a, a little better for the animals. They are, they're able to pick and choose kind of the vegetation that they're eating a, at which times that they're eating it. And then. They're able to pick and choose kind of the vegetation that they're eating a- at which times that they're eating it and then, um, but we, we do. Use that model in certain circumstances when necessary, and that's gonna be if there's like unruly vegetation that really. We need to like put the sheep in a confined area to like make sure they eat all the honeysuckle or something like that. Um, I mean, the honeysuckle isn't maybe their first choice, but it's twenty eight percent protein. It's really good. If you kind of like pressure them to eat it a little bit, then they will. But again, this isn't that, this isn't something that's gonna be happening at this site. And it's not something that is a general practice. I mean, it does happen. I think within the regenerative, um, grazing world, I mean. You, 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 you do see some of that on solar, um, but, but most of the smaller solar sites. We can either move the sheep from one site to another, to another, to another, within the same community and kind of do the same thing without the electric fencing. Um, also, we never use um e- electro netting. Um, if anything, we would use single strand polywire. Because electro netting, the sheep could get caught in it, you know, and, and if there's not somebody there all the time monitoring them, like maybe on a home farm. We just would not want that. So if we were to divide the site in half, we would use single strand polywire and probably. Um, and, and if a sheep gets underneath it, it's not the end of the world. We're just kind of like saying, hey, eat on this side and then go eat on that side. Um, you know, but. Um, but it, but again, it's, 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 uh, it is a common practice. It's just not some wa- not something that we see uh on our solar sites all that often. And certainly not one that we're planning to do on this particular site.
Thank you. Just have one more question for, um, I think probably for Brian. If that's okay. So I know when I was watching the planning and zoning meetings, this was sort of discussed as, oh, maybe this would be good as a way to avoid fertilizer. You know, the sheep will be, you know, kind of mowing essentially and not doing the fertilizer, which could contaminate the wetlands, which all sounds, um, great. Um, but then I was thinking of all these negatives and I asked, do you have to have the sheep? Is this like something that the solar company needs for the state of Illinois or what have you? And it. It sounds like maybe your answer was a yes. Can you clarify or explain if that's a component that needs to be done to approve of this or if this is an option?
Um, it is our intent and we essentially, we, yes, we would like to implement the, the. Agrovoltaic model for vegetation management, um, because we would like to apply. Uh, for the Illinois Shines program, which um complements some of probably what Tyler is gonna discuss, but uh. It, it is preferable and so I would say, um, yes, we would, would use the sheep for vegetation management.
Does the, does the, um, do the sheep allow you to um apply for agricultural taxing?
No.
Okay.
Okay, no, I'm done with my question.
You kind of touched on it, but. I just want, oh, I'm sorry.
You kind of touched on it, but I wanted to clarify. So if I'm hearing you properly.
I might have lost connection there.
Time during that time? It's, it's up to the, the sheep farmer to kind of manage how they. Best, um. How best works for them and what their, their goals are. Um, but I would say generally, you know, to Caleb echoed this, but. Uh, we're not leaving them there in the coldest months, um, so they would be removed, you know, once it starts. Getting down into the low thirties, um, and then put back.
So more than likely, they would be there the whole growing season, spring to fall.
Yep, yep.
Um, I have a question for Mi- Michael. I mean, obviously, we're. Altering zoning to, would be to allow this. Um, variance. Does that variance allow for farming of sheep? Cause I mean, it seems like this is becoming a sheep farm and a solar farm.
Yeah, this, this area is ag, so the comp plan is ag, remember, special use for the public solar farm, so. Um, I mean, this would be probably a permitted use that just within the livestock aspect, so I don't think there's a zoning. Issue per se with, with, with the livestock, limited livestock. So from our perspective, it doesn't create a zoning problem.
Okay.
Trustee Pierce?
Uh, it's just kinda, I, I wanted to say thank you for bringing up the agrival take. I know some meeting, I mentioned it. Like the next meeting, you're all over it, so I know you guys are listening to everything we say up here, so I do appreciate it. And just from my fellow board members, the, the research I've done on the agrival take, it, people just rave about it as a, as a side. Part of this, but I'm not necessarily always a fan of the solar, where they're located, but. This functionality is a much better improvement over having trucks and lawn mowers and. Um, stuff of that nature, doing your management of the agr- the, the landscape there.
Trustee Masek?
So the sheep, your, your situation for the coyotes, all you gotta do is put one llama. Takes care of your problems.
Donkey too.
The llamas will, will sit there, they do that on other sheep farms, they do that for wild game hunting farms, they take care of all their. It's to keep coyotes away. One llama ends the problem. They also take care of whatever the grass is, the grass. I think it's genius and I think this has to stay in the village so they control what you're doing, the landscape and whatnot, so. I think it's a brilliant idea, no lawn mowers, no nothing, brilliant with the sheep. All you gotta do is add a llama, no worries coyote. Those things are the most scary spitting animals.
I did not think the meeting was a turn into animal planet. I'm, I'm gonna go, uh, Mary and then back around. Do you have anything that you wanna add?
Yes, I just want to thank you for the information about the polls.
Absolutely.
Answered my question and, um, you mentioned the Illinois Shine program. What is this?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's Illinois's um community solar program, uh, and so. We can go to.
Well, no, I just, in a nutshell, you have to have the sheep there for.
Yeah, uh, we get to, uh, more points to be able to, um. We, we would like to win an award with the Illinois Shines program. Um, so, uh, as part of that application process. The sheep grazing and pollinator habitat helps us. One step further in getting to that, and so, um, there are some, some benefits in qualifying for that program and then. Um, ensuring that, uh, the electrons stay local as. Kind of the objective of that program.
Okay, and the buffer that's going to be along North Avenue to buffer these houses. What did you say? Four years they won't see a thing through the buffer?
Yeah, probably within about five years. Um, I would not expect them to be able to see, uh, into the project area.
Does, does the county have the same um restriction as far as buffering? That we do?
Theirs is looser for most of the North Avenue site. Um, except for the northwest corner of the North Avenue site, which is. Um, in closer proximity to residences.
Okay.
But the majority of that site is not adjacent to residences.
And does the county, um. Insist on a decommissioning grant bond?
Yeah, and that's, um, state, state driven, uh, through the agricultural mitigation or agricultural impact mitigation. Agreement.
So this, the state of Illinois requires that as well?
Yep.
Okay, okay. Those are all my questions, Your Honor.
Um, Trustee Berman had her hand up.
I don't, I don't have any questions. I just have a couple comments. Um. I personally, um, I don't know, the, with the sheep, I'm. Almost makes me not like this, this whole thing even more. Um. Like Trustee McNeil, I am a. Big animal lover. Um, I haven't been a vegetarian for over twenty years, so just to kind of put it into perspective. You know, I understand the one gentleman was saying about, um, the coyotes and, you know, they haven't had any issues, but I, I'm not. Really not completely sold on that. Um. And as far as the. Illinois Shines program, you said that that is a, sorry, that's community solar. I've got an issue with that. Um. Isn't that essentially? What, what you would call socialized energy?
This is.
Dave Stryker, the community solar program is a voluntary subscriber based program, so no one would be forced.
Okay, and do you know, is there any talk by the state of Illinois about? Cause I know that they're, they have a goal, their own goals, uh, to reach. Do you see that eventually turning to a point where everybody will be required to go that route?
I, I can't see that happening. I mean, Illinois is still primarily nuclear energy with the state and that is still the backbone of, of the electric grid here. Um, what solar does is offset your gas peaking, which is your most expensive power and also the most polluting, so I, I, I think they're trying to. Offset peak is the goal.
I, I have, um. Resident, build resident, uh, wants to address. Well, before you leave, we'll just tell you, just. We'll put the sheet back there just for the record.
Jay Higgins, we have, uh, the property directly to the north. Along with pretty much everybody over there. And, uh, the last meeting, I haven't been able to get to all of them, cause I don't live in Antioch, but I have eight acres up there. I can promise you, there's a coyote every single night that runs through the property. That helps. I know it doesn't help for them, but. Another thing, the last meeting I went to, which I think was, it was at the library, which I think was November. There once was a fence that was, wasn't going all the way to the ground to let animals pass under, so that's changed. Okay? Um, and the other thing was the, cause I spoke to the, the girl there at the time. They didn't, they were gonna put like four foot trees in there and I, I think it's an eight foot fence. And I think it was taller at that one time. It was like a twelve foot fence because the bottom, the bottom was gonna stay open like three foot, but now. So now you said, man? It makes it better, cause we're, I don't necessarily mind the solar, I just don't want the looks. I don't wanna look at that, cause they are the ugliest things in the world. And, uh, but we, I have a say or any of them have a say and, and just for your information, I gave them my email. They said they were gonna get back and he never once got back. And we're worried about the battery leakage, cause they said they do leak. And that contaminating and with the wetlands being right, right there, especially Deer Lake right there, that all gets in there. Now, we're on the other side of the street. But they don't mention that. They don't mention that stuff. Another thing for the schools, if I understand right, if I remember right, maybe something's changed. I think is the town of Antioch gonna get, get like between six and ten thousand dollars a year for this? I mean, that's like one house with taxes, right? Is it even worth it? I don't know, I'm done.
Thank, thank you, sir. Sir, you coming up to speak?
Okay. Sure.
Oh, thank you. My name is Ken Higgins. That was my youngest son. Ninety-two, we found the acreage, fifty-four acres. Donated two to the county, cleaned up the ditch at their request. We jumped through all the hoops. So we've been enjoying family compound out there. And, uh, I've been listening to the pros and cons and I understand what it is, but I. Heard that just a few miles west of that property, you locate another site.
No, so this, that's not true. It's, um, yeah, all the other sites that have been proposed. Oh. Um, are in lake, in lake, in the, in the, um, county. And so just so you know, um, this property itself is, uh. Butts up to the county, so there is a possibility, whichever way this goes, that that property could go back into the county and they could still approve it.
Well, yeah, that was our concern. I heard that, but my, just my question is. Um, I have the same arguments, uh, or differences that were stated, but. Does Antioch really need that? Is it that? Cause last two days, I've watched the farmer. Mow the whole place. Bail hay, I, I count with twelve, uh, hay wagons going back to the farm. And, uh, there could have been many more. My question is. Does Antioch really need this one? There's, there's property around that wouldn't interfere with any home sites. But, uh, I've been living in Antioch for twenty seven years and, uh. I just don't know, uh, why this particular property, how it's located on the highway. And, uh, needs, needs that. If there's gonna be other sites available.
So.
I think, can you also, before you guys leave, for you just make sure you sign in, so we have your name and email address, that type of stuff. Thank you.
It's right here.
Um, all right, back to the, I don't know if you wanna address any of that or go back to the board for any more questions?
I'd like to mention there, there's no batteries proposed as part of the project. And we did change the fencing concept. Uh, originally, there would have been, um, I think, three or four feet. Between the ground and the, uh, upper. Um, or lower portion of the fence to allow the critters to pass through, but since we're doing the sheep, we've committed to that. The, um, the fence has to be flush with the ground. At minimum, if not more, to make sure, you know. The, the coyotes can't get in.
All right, I'll go here, I'll go here and then, uh, we'll see right on the presentation.
I just wanted to follow up on, on something that some of our residents have said and, and I have a question for you guys. It appears from a comment that was just mentioned about, you know, that they really. They don't wanna see this. And, and I agree, if you plant a three foot or four foot tree, it's gonna take longer than five years before that thing prevents screening. Being that we have a whole family right across the street from this facility, is there any? Are you open to or the possibility of maybe planting a mixture of larger trees? In that berm instead of just the smaller ones to give, maybe not instant screenage, but at least. A quicker screenage so that they know that they're not gonna have to look at that for five, six, seven years.
Understood. Um, can we fast forward in the, the jet? Towards the end? Keep going. I can't remember what the tallest tree is that we need to plant at the time of planting. But the visuals, but this is it, yeah. So, so there's like a staggered row of. A multiple staggered row of plants that are gonna be planted initially. Um, so it's a mixture of evergreen and deciduous shrubs and trees. And so I think. You know, at, at year one, once that gets planted, it, it will be hard to see in at that time, but again. I guess this is, this is year five, so once it's filled out more. I wish that I could remember off the top of my head what the tallest trees are. You know, typically, we're seeing like maybe six feet tall. Um, six, okay, so, um, yeah, so six feet at, at time of planting and that's, you know. Four, kind of four rows of, between shrubs and trees, so I. You know.
Understood. Now, is, that's on flat ground though, correct? You're not doing any berming and then the planting's not on top of a berm of any type?
Correct.
And that's your estimate at five years?
That was the estimate, yes, estimated five years.
And I just wanted to clarify and this, uh. Also mentioned the part about the county and the other approval. There is another solar farm down on Nelson Road that's from them that has been approved by the county. also mentioned the part about the county and the other approval. There is another solar farm down on Nelson Road that's from them that has been approved by the county. And, um, per township, uh, minutes or agenda, there's one on, um, Beach Grove, that's being discussed also in the unincorporated areas of the township. Um, I'm guessing there's gonna be more as we go forward. You're not associated with the Beach Grove?
No.
Road one? Okay. And regretfully, I think what you guys were discussing about the county is there is a possibility if the village turns this down, that they can go to de-annex that property back to the county and I could almost guarantee you the county will approve it. So it's kind of one of those where you're damned if you do, damned if you don't, from your standpoint. So it's, it's kind of one of those where we're, I think we're trying to come to some type of plan where we can all agree that it's the best of what we can get. Um, but that's why I'm glad you're here so that we can hear from you that are impacted on this on a daily basis. Um, and I, I thank you for, for coming and sharing your opinion.
Thank you. Rebecca?
I'm good.
This side of the dice. See, Mary has her hand up.
I agree with trustee Blueheart. Is there any way that you could put from the get-go, right from the jump, you could put in larger trees along North Avenue? To buffer some of these houses from seeing this at all? If, if you could concede that. I'm sure you can't, you, you're not able to make the decision yourself, um, but if you could go back and.
I, yeah, I mean, I, I, I want to propose a plan that, um, that the village and the residents in this room are, are comfortable with. And so we can certainly look into that. I mean, um, I think, yes, we can certainly look into it and, uh, you know, yep.
All right, trustee Pearson then.
Um, just, just along the plantings and the questions about the plantings. Um, as somebody who's subjected to a lot of plantings, the larger something gets, the higher the price goes, uh, exponentially. It doesn't start off with like, uh, a five foot tall tree is five dollars and a six, uh, ten foot tall is six dollars. A ten foot tall may be fifty dollars. So as we're sitting here talking monies and dollars and what we can get from them for the village, uh, we're also, you know, the discussion here is possibly impacting the cost of, of, of them doing business, which, you know, maybe we have to impact the cost um, of you doing business, but, um, we also want to make sure that the plantings that go in there don't overgrow the fence, so to speak. So you got, uh, uh, something big. It started off big in the beginning, but then taller than the fence. So hopefully it's a, a good plan on the, on, on the planting. Um, so I just want, I just wanted to say that, because I know we're gonna be hitting you up tomorrow.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And that is, that is my hesitation to answer that. So clearly, so.
All right, so, um, I feel like you've, well, I appreciate that you've gone back and heard the questions last time, came back with information, the packets for us. The next step is going to be, um, to decide if you want us to put you, I mean, I'd like to move this along because we've talked about you. You're probably sick of coming back here yourself, um, putting on a village board meeting for a vote, uh, which could either be the twenty-eighth of June or the, uh, second meeting in July, twenty-sixth? Oh, sorry, twenty-sixth of June and then whatever this, uh, it's gotta be the twenty-fourth of July. So I'll kind of defer to you guys timing wise. You'll have to tell us right now, clerk, and then, but then we will get it up for, you know, the vote with the final packet that's presented. Is that so good for you? Is that work for you guys?
Can you say the dates again? Was that twenty-sixth of June?
So, yeah, our next meeting is the twenty-sixth of June. Uh, we're not doing the tenth of July and we'll do the twenty-fourth of July again. Or anytime thereafter, it's up to you guys timing wise, how you want to do this.
Yeah, um, we are under a timeframe here with the Illinois Shines Program and our, our deadline to try and file this application so that we can move forward under that program. Um, and that is one of the, the things that we need is either a denial or an approval, um, in order to move forward. Obviously we need the approval by, uh, the end of this month. Um, and so, uh, it's, you know, we've, we've been here for a little while.
If you're back here again, it's not gonna be for discussions, it's gonna be strictly for a vote like you heard in the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, then I would say, uh, June.
Twenty-sixth.
June twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I'll get it right. I know, I see a couple more hands, uh, final questions.
I just wanted to kind of piggyback off of what, oh.
No, go after you.
Off of what Mr. Higgins had stated, um, in regards to the fence, um, I know that when that was discussed, um, you guys were concerned about that too and, you know, kind of held a genuine concern along with residents in regards to not completely disturbing the animals that are around there. And that was therefore the reason why, uh, you stated about having that fence, that opening there for them so that they weren't gonna be disturbed. But the problem that I have now is that because of this Illinois sunshine program, that opportunity now that, if that plan is just forgotten and the animals that have been living around here are just forgotten and, uh, that doesn't sit well with me. So that's all I want to say.
Sir?
Just wanted to say, um, when I asked about putting up a berm or taller trees, it was a hard no. Just flat out, no questions asked. And my next question was when the tree, the bush dies, who maintains that? They said they're going to, but how do we force them to do that? Does that then fall on you guys? When there's, when the trees die or whatever, because I mean, some of our houses are looking right at this. And like my driveway is, is their driveway. It's just, it's just, I, again, I don't mind the solar. I just don't want the looks. If we could, if, if we could do taller trees, I think half of us would be happy. Now we're gonna have to, I mean, it's a farm, but smell the goats and all that stuff, which we're out there every day. Two of us have pools and now we're just gonna be, you know, I don't know. It's just like my dad said, you know, he's lived in, I've, I'm fifty-two, I've lived here my whole life, you know? And I, I don't know when we bought that property twenty-some years ago, if not longer, you know? Had businesses in town, you know, and, um, it's just a shame. That's all I have to say.
Thank, thank you, sir. Uh, Rebecca, I think had one more question.
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I thought maybe you were gonna finish the presentation, so I didn't ask about it earlier, but I'm the bird person, of course, that
Yes.
Talked to you about the birds because I think that solar is great for a lot of reasons, but my big fear was the proximity to the wetlands. So I did, you know, my own research as I discussed with you with UW Madison and then also the Audubon Society got back to me. I know you and I spoke, but there's that desert study where the birds were crash landing, thinking that it was water. But can you just kind of touch on how this is going to be different? Because our whole authentic by nature is we want, we want clean energy, of course, but I don't want a bunch of bird carcasses and collisions and that's what makes Antioch so special. So you're telling me it's gonna be a little bit different of a look, so there's less, if you don't mind explaining that.
Correct. And I don't, Carl, are you still on?
I certainly am.
Oh, there's Carl. Okay, so it's a, it's a, a function of the technology and Carl can go into more depth, but the, the Desert Sunlight Project is a fixed tilt, um, and so it, it stays in the same position all day long. Whereas our proposed project will tilt with the sun, it'll follow the angle of the sun. And so there's, there's less opportunity for uh, glare as a result of that, because it's always trying to get the most electricity or photons as possible. Um, and so with that, I'll let Carl talk a little more.
Hello all. Thank you for having me and, uh, nice to meet with you again and I appreciate your interest in the topic. And if we go to the slides, um, on the, uh, bird mortality patterns, please. All right, let's click on slide twenty would be great. So, um, to the trustee member that brought up, so next slide, that brought up the comment about the study in, uh, the Southwest, I was the lead author on that study. And what I want to show you today is something that's, I think, kind of important for thinking about how birds in particular interact with solar facilities. So on the left image is desert sunlight and interestingly, this was one of the first utility scale solar facilities developed in the southwestern US and in the US in general in twenty fifteen. This facility is five hundred and fifty megawatts. And as Brian noted, they used fixed panels. So the panels were at an angle that was fixed. They did not move and the panel technology that they used did not have an anti-reflective coating. So when the data from desert sunlight was incorporated into public hearings and into research papers, it was our only representation of bird fatality patterns at PV Solar. So there was this, um, assumption that the patterns we would find at every other solar project would be similar to desert sunlight. And so if, if you look in Google Earth and you go to two, six, twenty sixteen, you can find this image. And then if you scan twenty-two miles to the east, you can find the McCoy Solar Project. This project uses tracker panels with an anti-reflective coating. So look at the, these pictures were probably taken by the same satellite at the same time. Look at the difference in the perspective. We see the glare off the panels. We, we can kind of infer how a bird might mistake that for water. These tracker panels create so much of a different look on the landscape. And in the next slide, we'll see, um, research by, um, Dr. Yuki Hamada at the Argonne National Laboratory there in Illinois. And they put out, um, cameras to record birds at seven solar, at seven sites in four regions. And being there, um, in Illinois-based national lab, they had three solar sites in the Midwest. Now, all of them had water bodies within one mile. One site had a pond and a creek within point one five miles. So they're in an agricultural landscape. They have some water nearby and they recorded seventeen thousand six hundred eight instances of birds moving around the solar project. And what they found was they never observed a collision of a bird with the solar panel in seventeen thousand six hundred and eight instances of activity. They had birds flying over, flying through, perching on panels, landing ground, perching in the background. I was at a solar site recently in Colorado. I saw plenty of birds within and throughout the solar facility, perching on the panels. So this is research that is funded by the US Department of Energy and the research is ongoing, but it's very encouraging that they did not have any of those collisions. So if you go back to the previous slide, what, what is happening on the, uh, the re, the landscape here is that what we see is a movement away from desert sunlight. You will, it's, it is rare to almost, um, uncommon to see a project developed fixed panels, no AR coding. Renewable Properties has proposed using tracker panels with anti-reflective coating. It's going to look like the facility on the right, not on the left. Um, we might find an occasional bird carcass in a solar project in the US. But as to the, um, the comment, it's a, it's a very, it's a well-researched comment about bird collisions with solar projects. Yes, the original data suggested that birds could be attracted to PV solar facilities and collide with them. But the technology has been updated and largely addressed the problem, um, so that we don't have images like that on the left anymore at PV projects.
Thank you so much for your time. Can I ask just one more question, Dr. Cocey, if I'm saying that correctly?
Oh, very good. Yes, happy to answer.
Okay, so the last question and I'll let the board, I'll, I'll stop with all my animal questions for the night, but I also had reached out to the Audubon Society because I know they're a huge proponent of solar for clean energies to prevent, you know, global warming and save the birds. Um, but one of their comments back to me was that sometimes you have to be careful with, like, they called it, and I don't know what all this means, the genti's and the power lines because they have seen electrocution of all the birds. And again, my worry is just that it's so close to these wetlands. Is there any sort of protection for the birds against that risk of electrocution?
Yeah, so, um, we don't have a genti line, maybe in the, the sense of what Audubon might be referring to. That's typically, um, what you might see with a hundred acre or hundreds of acre type solar facility where they're, they're building their own substation. Um, in this instance, we just have four distribution poles that are right next to the existing distribution line. And so that's our genti. Um, so it's, it's not the same, it's just not the, it's not an equivalent.
Okay, thank you. That was it. I'm done with all my animal questions. Thank you.
No, thank you. And I, I wanted to reiterate, we, we've, we had Carl on the, the call tonight to hopefully inspire more confidence around this particular topic. I know it's important to Antioch. Um, I got a chance to go out to the zoo myself. I understand why it's important to Antioch. So we wanted to provide him as an expert, you know, research.
Um, thank you and, uh, I appreciate it. I'm gonna work with my assistant and any other trustees that, you know, maybe wanna go out and access a site or visit kind of where the residents live to kind of get an on-the-ground view of it too. So that always helps me to get a visual, you know, to see the site itself. So thank you very much. We'll make sure to put you on for the twenty-eighth. But just twenty-sixth, I'm, what is it?
Is that right?
It's someone's birthday or something. Twenty-sixth. I'll see you in two weeks.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. All right, last item. Uh, discussion regarding an intergovernmental agreement for shared facility use with the Board of Education of Antioch Consolidated School District Number Thirty-four. What? You do, living?
Yeah.
You living?
Trip hazards. Welcome, hello. Um, we have met with thirty-four quite a few times. Um, in the past, our agreement was we only paid for you, on our facility uses, we only paid, um, the district if we were using it outside of the normal business day. The nine to, or, um, till ten PM, anything else, weekends or after ten. So basically it was only when we used it on the weekends. Their first proposal was that it was, um, every time we walk through the door, the amount, it, the first was impossible. We would have lost money by running programs at the schools, running our rec programs. Um, but so the one you have before you is workable. It is just, um, they're, they will work with us. It's fifty dollars. Every time we walk through the door for, if it's a four hour stay or they said they would go down, because some of our classes, we only do two forty-five minute classes. So it's under two hours and they'll only charge us twenty-five dollars. So a six-week class, um, we potentially, what would that be? A six-week class, a person pays ninety-one dollars for the class. And if we were to walk through the door six times, um, what would that be? Six times? Oh, it's times the twenty-five. Yeah. So it, we can do it. We will, um, either break even or manage, but we can do it and it's workable and they're willing to work with us, knowing that we need to provide recreation for the children of Antioch. And that's what we use their gyms for is for all our sports classes.
Was the original number seventy-five?
I thought it was seventy-five or sixty every time we walk through the door. Whether it was an hour or four hours.
Okay.
So I recommend that, yeah. Question.
Yep, trustee.
Do we charge any fee, uh, from District Thirty-four for the usage of the van shell? Like, because they have the annual arc.
We, no, we don't, um, but Rich Melzer's the IT guy, he invoices them for all the that stuff, the electronics and the audio and all that.
Right, because I was gonna say we just did, right, maintenance and lighting and, okay.
Yeah, I think they are paid, some of that cost sharing are out of pocket. And I think their justification on this is when it's outside of hours, they gotta pay a janitor or somebody to clean them. So that's kind of their balance.
Wait, the, the money? No, it's for maintenance of the building.
For the, what we're paying thirty-four?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we don't use it outside of the janitor hours.
Got it, got it.
If we do, according to the agreement, it says we have to pay, um, extra costs for that janitor outside.
Right, but we don't, we don't hold classes past ten PM and then we now no longer use them on the weekend because the, the price is astronomical for us. So it's mainly just after school hours from five to seven is the max, five to eight maybe.
All right, yep, well.
I mean, we do we do need to use it.
I hate to say it is what it is, but it seems like this.
Right, it is.
Okay, yeah, I'll remember this.
It is only a one year agreement and we will, you know, log the cost of what it's gonna cost us to run programs there. So.
All right, well, thank you for your hard work on getting that back to us. So we'll move this to the next meeting as well on the 26th. All right, um, next, we have any other business? I know we have a couple department reports coming up. Community development report, do we have anything, Michael?
Very, very briefly, I want to let you know that you'll be next meeting in June. You'll be seeing a new Starbucks. Starbucks didn't make it through the planning commission. So Starbucks Route 59, making some tweaks, modifications to the elevations. But you'll see that for approval at the next meeting. In addition, I want to let you know, we had a really good meeting today with regards to on the marketplace property on the Kia, pretty much the Kia pad is complete, ready to go, working on the foundation. They're making real extensive progress on Brown Road. The great news is that we did receive feedback from IDOT. They're okay with a phased improvements on Route 59. So that development is moving along. We're also in the mayor, myself and the village administrator are meeting with the developer this week who's who's picked up the four commercial outlets next to Kia. So hopefully we'll see that that commercial development coming in probably hopefully this summer. And I just real briefly, I wanted just to advise the board. There's been a lot of discussion, confusion about the rental ordinance. I know there's been a lot of chatter on Facebook about whether the the ordinance itself has been implemented or not. I just want to reiterate that ordinance, as you recall, was adopted two years ago. Approximately around 90% of all the rental units in the village, most every major complex has registered, which was really a huge improvement. So we now have all the contacts with all the management companies, all emergency contacts. In addition, we have been responding to any any call, anybody who's has complained about the condition of the unit. Staff has been responsive. We send Mr. Hill, our building inspector, out to his spectrum. We've been doing that for over a year. So if somebody out in the public and I'm gonna work with Mr. Moran to get this word out. But if somebody's concerned about the condition of their apartment, we do have a rental ordinance. The village does send an inspector out there and we try to respond. The only only thing we've not fully implemented is a complete inspection protocol. As you know, the ordinance calls for an annual inspection of units and we've not implemented that. And so our software is finally approved. I know we're making real progress finally on the software. But that's I want to just get the board the current status of the of the rental ordinance. With that, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Garrigan.
Jesse Bourbon.
Oh.
You might as well stay up here, Mr. Garrigan.
Jesse Bourbon.
You can go ahead.
Oh, you go ahead here.
Um, so I know there has been a lot of chatter on Facebook and to my understanding, there is the one particular apartment building. There's some major issues going on there. Is are are we able to do any? Does that ordinance cover anything that's going on there?
Yes, we did an inspection of that property. We did make a determination there's a major problem in that property. We did confer with the landlord, the management company. They basically stipulated or admitted there was a major problem. They're in a process of basically gutting for units, which unfortunately is going to require four tenants to relocate. But that's a perfect example.
That's permanently though, right? Not temporarily.
I can't, it's a civil matter. I don't know the particulars. I'm not involved in the litigation, but it's my understanding that there's litigation between the landlord and the tenants. That's all I can say. But that's a perfect example that where staff did have an opportunity to walk through the apartment, made a determination. We contacted the management company. They again acknowledge it's just a major problem and they're proceeding with making repairs.
And trustee, the other day, trustee Bluthart, myself, Chief Gutcho, Michael had a conference call and just landlord tenant law is not easy. But we are going to work on making the resources available for like tenants rights packages and getting the resources within Village Hall for people to be able to get to the right location. So. Any other, we had quite a few questions, questions?
Yeah, I got I got two. First of all, on the Starbucks, can we get a the board get a diagram of it sooner than later so we can see it? I've heard I've heard it's backwards on the property and I'm just curious to see the layout.
In regards to how faces? Yeah, I could be more happy to see you say plan.
Just send it to the whole board.
That's fine.
Okay, and back to the discussion about the tenants and the rental ordinance and all that stuff. This is two years later.
Well, again, for the record, as I've stated, we have been following inspections. I mean, there's there's perception that we've not we have not been responding to complaints. We've responded on a monthly basis. We sent Mr. Hill out there on a monthly basis to respond to actual requests for inspections. So the notion that we've not been doing inspections is not correct. The notion that we've not been responding to complaints is not correct. Again, there has been generally compliance with regards to people registering that information we did not have before. Now, as as it relates to actual annual inspections at every unit that we we have made quite clear, there's a software issue and quite frankly, there's a manpower issue. We don't have demands, we do not have staff to inspect every unit in the village of Antioch every year, point blank.
And then I thought we changed the ordinance to upon a move out and a move in to inspect the unit.
There was some discussion about, again, allowing us to have the opportunity when there's a vacancy, basically kind of a middle ground to do that. And we've actually had several units like Joanna Courts, perfect example. They have Mr. The owner of that development has requested inspections when there have been vacancies. But not every not every tenant landlord has done that comprehensively. As we discussed, we've been waiting for a try to implement a software which would put the burden on the landlord, the registry's units, the schedule and an annual inspection when there's a vacancy.
Okay, so are there records of the complaints? Are there records of the visits? Do we have?
Absolutely, absolutely. We I mean, we've been working with our administrative assistant. She takes the complaint. Many cases, it ends up at my desk, but we have records of those inspections, whether it's downtown. Some many of our units downtown, we've had complaints about. Just for the record, this is the first, you know, with regards to Antioch matter. This is the first in the past month and a half. This is the first complaint that I've received for that development since I've been here, point blank. So we do not receive an extensive number of complaints for our rental units. So in many cases, you may argue there are many serious conditions of our rental units, but we we are not receiving complaints comprehensively, systematically across the board. We receive one or two complaints a month. That's a lot. And we again, we do, we spend extensive amount of time walking through units, trying to, you know, work with the landlord, trying to resolve the issues. But as you all know, many cases, these are civil matters, I think would be very challenging us, very challenging for the village to get involved in the middle of a civil litigation with regards to forcible entry and try to intervene in that or resolve a lot of these issues. And a lot of these cases are gray, you know, with regards to like issues like mold. Those a lot of those issues are are very challenging to make a determination how serious the mold is. It's not it's not black and white. Many what many cases is very, very challenging.
And and I understand that part that's very challenging. And I also understand we don't want to put one little pinky in the middle of a of a civil litigation case with between a renter and a and a the rentee, so to speak. We don't want to be part of that at all because then we we would skew the the case and we would end up owning the case. And then I'd be paying this guy and his friends more money, which I don't want to do. And so I understand that part. But what I do understand is it's two years later and there there's questions and concerns about a program that was an ordinance passed two years ago. And it's not just this one. There's there's been history of this over the past. And I'll be very honest with you. One of the reasons why I I supported the the having a Chadman at this time instead of an admin was because of that reason. So we need to start as we if there's a case where we do something on the board and we you don't have the manpower or the cost or you can't do it, you need you need to through whoever let us know because I I spend a lot, I just drove six, I threw two hours to get here today. I made sure I was at the customer site last night at a hotel waiting so I could be here to work. I don't I don't work and come here just to just to pass things and then move on and say I passed them. I want I want stuff done.
And but also for the record, I think those are all fair points, but I think it's prerogative staff to say that this is, you know, with the arts, I can't tell, I probably have six or seven major co enforcement cases right now, which have all been referred, which are in litigation. And as an attorney, licensed attorney, I can tell you litigation unfortunately doesn't work quick either. It's very, it's very, it takes years to resolve these issues. We have numerous cases which are major, high exposure, basically co enforcement cases with the board, you know, has made numerous complaints. They're basically in the in the court of law, which I don't.
Wait a second. Wait, so I'm as a as a somebody who stayed at Holiday Inn Express last night. You know, I understand for the last 20 some odd years, I'm not quite here as long as the chief, but almost some of the things we've been working on for those 20, 25 years aren't done yet. But a lot of the things that we want done need to get done.
Oh, we we need the cooperation of the the courts. Again, it's not only staff, but also the courts. It's it's, you know, with regards to the code enforcement. It's not, it doesn't happen overnight on that beat there's litigation.
Um, just briefly, why don't just part of this discussion and it will still go around? Maybe just give a little, because I've been on, we brought this up several times about the software. And there were some glitches in the initial implementation which set us back based on us kind of being sold a false bill of goods on a on a one program. Is that my understanding, Chief?
Yes. Admittedly, I think staff needs to be a do in myself in particular, need to do a better job at making sure the board understands implementation challenges when issues come forward. I think we do have a history at times of racing to the finish line before fully vetting out some of the challenges and and goals that we need to establish when passing legislation. And in this particular case, getting software to track and monitor inspections, have have a follow up punch list, have a have a mechanism for registrations of of the apartments. So we know what's out there, who we need to inspect and when do you inspect them? Would have been one of the logical challenges for us to address early on in this process. We did, staff did research software. I believe it was in the last budget cycle, even the prior one. I I can't specify since I wasn't a part of it. Recommendations were made and we went with with the lower lowest cost option. Unfortunately, sometimes you get what you pay for. And we pretty quickly realized when I when I came into this role last fall that the solution selected wasn't going to work for us. So we did rebudget the appropriate funds. It's not significantly more expensive, but it is more expensive. And I set staff to work rather quickly to start exploring what our other alternative options are. They have identified the solution that they believe is going to work best for us. Again, trying to be methodical in our decisions so we don't make the wrong choice a second time. So we get the best process. And I admit it has taken some time, but we are making great strides and staff is working hard behind the scenes to make this this become a reality for the board and the community because we understand it's a priority.
All right, thank you. Jesse Mason?
Yeah, I'm gonna defend staff on this one because when we brought that ordinance up, we talked about it be a couple, two, three year project, just finding a lot of these properties are in land trust to find out who the heck actually owns some of the building properties and for them to respond. You know, we also have a lot of dilapidated properties. I asked for the ordinance and we got a lot of people that don't cut the grass. And you pick on one person, let's pick on everybody. You know, with grass cutting with stuff in the yard that are just, let's pick on everybody. Don't just pick on one group of people. Let's pick on life safety for everybody. Not let's not dime out one person. Pick on everybody. Every time you're in here, you pick on a group of people that own apartment buildings. Staff, I think, does a fine job what they do with the limited resources. I've got us, I'm I'm in a job where they cut, cut, cut. I could be on the phone for an hour on hold waiting to talk to an underwriter. And 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 when when this ordinance was brought up, we said it's going to be a challenge just to find out who the heck in land trusts or who's the president of a corporation that might have the property. If we're gonna do this, I want to do it, but I want to pack every home. We got we got properties in the village that are vacant right in the center of town. We got properties, I got probably 15 emails of different properties on David Street. I got properties in Oak and Knolls. I got from from individuals. Let's tackle them all at the next meeting. You're gonna pick on one group of people, let's pick on them all. Because we got properties with awesome rats, everything else living in them, making it dangerous for other kids of rabies and whatnot. Pick them all, not just one group of people. I don't like it.
Thank you, Jesse Peterson. All right. Who's next?
What's next? Give a quick update on the RFP process for the cafe. So the RFP went out on June 1st with the deadline of the 14th of of June. In that process, I put in there a site visit. I thought it was something that's gonna be really appropriate. You'll have the vendor be able to look at the building. I made that I put that in there in the RFP without having a great conversation with people from Boulder. I did Boulder, sorry. I didn't realize how challenging it was to be to get into the building, right? So I had some conversation with Boulder, trying to get some people in there. Right now, it's not, it's an active work site. It's not safe. And so right now, that process has been moved back. So we're hoping for a tentative date of the 26th to go get in there, which then pushes back the date of the deadline because everybody I've talked to, so we we had originally six vendors that had reached out that are interested. One dropped off, one had just recently dropped off. So four that are still very actively interested in the property. But as any restaurateur will know, that they're not going to go into a kitchen or or into a restaurant inside a lease without fully understanding what the limitations are and what the layout is gonna be. And so it's my fault. It was it was something that I thought would be easier to get in there after hours, whatever it is. But so knowing that process now going through with with older, we're hoping that the 26th would be a date, which is then gonna push the RFP deadline deadline to probably July or July 12th to give them adequate time because they have people go in there, see the property, also understand what they're purchasing is gonna be. They have to buy coolers and or whatever that each individual business has. So it's really unfair to expect them to turn in a deadline without really being fully abreast of the situation. So I just want you guys to know that there is gonna be a delay, which does push back obviously the selection process. As soon as we have those in the four and and hopefully in this process, there's still more that come to light. But you're just as originally, like I said, there was $6 for. But so I just want to make sure you guys are aware of what that situation looks like. And we are in contact with all them now, letting them know that we have pushed back the deadline for right now. But so just in case there's any questions on that, is there any questions that I can answer in that process so far?
Great, thank you. Um, I believe Finance Director is at a conference, so so we'll she can catch us up at the next meeting. Commander Smith.
Good evening, I have a brief one for you guys. First, I'd like to thank everyone for attending the Shop on the Cop fundraiser event. We raised over $6,100 there. It's great for the community and for Special Olympics. As you know, as I hope you guys know, we've lost our code enforcement officer to some medical reasons. So we conducted two interviews today and we have three interviews set for tomorrow. So we'll get one on board shortly, which should help out in other areas. We continue to work through the background checks of our new applicants. And that's a lengthy process, but we have another officer who's gonna help out our detective bureau while he's on light duty as well. Now, we attended the last District 117 and the year safety meeting. We continue to work with them for campus safety and I think next year is gonna be even better year than we had this year. All of our officers attended the Stop the Bleed training, which occurred a few weeks ago, which helps with traumatic injury and supports us in our function as first responders. We're also putting our younger officers through pistol level one or two training courses, which are implemented to strengthen and provide advanced skills and weaponry retention and masters of the craft. So it was yesterday, today, and then the final event is tomorrow. So all of our officers will be up to pistol level one and two. So we're proud about that. So I have.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. I do believe we have a request for executive sessions. Who's that? What's it regard? Who's that? What's it regarding?
It is regarding personnel.
It is regarding personnel, update on litigation and collective bargaining.
So I would entertain a motion to
Possible property acquisition.
A motion to entertain those items in executive session with no further business to take place after executive session.
I'll move.
Motion, Trustee Bluthart.
Second.
Second, Trustee Peterson, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, meeting adjourned at 8:50 and we will go into executive session. Thank you.